Alberto Benavides present.
Nerida Cantú present.
Mary Hernández present.
Alex Cantú present.
And that is the end of the call.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. May we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doc. Next up, the public comments.
We have no public comments.
So then we'll move on to the next one, which is the update on the Coronavirus Response and Relief Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, as by Josh Henry.
Thank you. We do have Mr. Josh Haney from Ocasey &amp; Associates that will be joining us via Zoom. So if we can get that connection, please.
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, I just wanted to start off saying that you guys picked an amazing time to get an update on the federal stimulus because there was a lot of news this afternoon on that front. So I tried my best to update this presentation to reflect some of that. But even the experts here are still digesting a lot of it. And so, you know, excellent timing on y'all's part. You guys get the first update in the entire state on this. So excellent timing. And also, I just wanted to say that I've been spending the past couple of weeks working with Mr. Lopez in your business office and Mr. Garza. And I truly have not met a business office staff that's more eager to learn and to dive into the numbers and the details on a whole host of things than those two. And so I just want to let y'all know that you guys got a great team there. And they are really dedicated and working as hard as they can to get you guys accurate data and analysis. That way, you guys can make the best decisions possible. So I just wanted to tip my hat to those two because they've really impressed us so far with their dedication and willingness to really dig deep. Okay, so with that, I'm going to give y'all an update on the federal stimulus funding that is heading your way. First, I want to put it in a little bit of context and just talk about the session, the legislative session that's going on right now and how these pieces fit with the state budget. It kind of made more sense given what we knew about the stimulus beforehand. But I'll just go ahead and give y'all an update real quick. So you can see that the state budget is moving along. It was passed by the House on April 22. And that included some amendments that were, that was tacked on by the House, and I'll touch on those here in a minute. But right now, we're kind of getting towards the end of session. That's May 31. And so the budget now goes to what's called a conference committee. And that's essentially a select group of members from the House and from the Senate that meet pretty much behind closed doors at this point, unfortunately. And they iron out the differences between the House and Senate versions of the budget. And there are some notable differences, particularly as it relates to stimulus dollars. And I'll touch on those here in a minute. And so, once they, once they iron out those differences, it goes back to the House and Senate for approval and then on to the governor for his signature. There are some differences in Article 3, which is the portion of the budget related to public education. But they're pretty minor. And this is between the House and the Senate versions of the budget. The portions of the budget that's related to the foundation school program, those are identical between the two. So not a whole lot of differences between the two versions with regards to the state funding that will flow to districts. And a question we get all the time is, are they going to fully fund House Bill 3? And yes, both budgets fully fund House Bill 3. You can see what that means in terms of the state cost there. That's, that's going to cost, fully funding House Bill 3 is going to cost the state an extra $3.1 billion for student growth and about $1 billion for tax compression. However, neither budget currently factors in SRR2 or SRR3 dollars. And there's also other stimulus funds that are flowing to the state outside of SRR2 and SRR3. SRR2 and SRR3 are just the two sort of K-12-related buckets of money in the, in those two stimulus packages. There are other buckets of money as well. So going back to the budget, there were, it was a very robust debate and conversation that occurred on, on the 22nd when all, when the House took up the budget and debated all the amendments. They adopted a number of amendments related to the stimulus dollars. The House has been very aggressive in making its desire known that it does not want to supplant state dollars with federal stimulus dollars. The House has been very clear about that. That amendment passed nearly unanimously. And so the House has really laid down, sort of drawn a line in the sand in that regard. And then another amendment there directed the commissioner on how to utilize TEA's portion of SRR3. So TEA gets, like with SRR1, TEA gets to keep a portion of it and for sort of administrative purposes and to direct for its own programs. And so that amendment dictates sort of that plan. And it also requires districts to publicly report their plans for how they're going to use SRR2 and SRR3 dollars. And then another amendment requires a special session to be convened so that the legislature could appropriate any stimulus dollars that aren't already out the door. Given today's news, that still leaves SRR2 money that hasn't, that we haven't gotten any news on. So today's discussion was just related to SRR3. That was the latest one under the American Rescue Plan. So we still don't have a whole lot of information on SRR2 dollars, of which La Jolla would, would get an entitlement from. The, just, and the last two amendments here, just to touch on here real quick, are the House did include a rider that would prevent any funds from being used for vouchers or voucher-like programs. And it also moved $100 million out of the governor's enterprise fund, which is like an economic development fund that's housed in the governor's office. And it moved that money over to the property tax relief fund, which would trigger some additional property tax compression. And we're not exactly sure how that would impact La Jolla at this point. And so we will, and again, if that is in the final version of the budget, that could result in some additional tax compression. And so to the topic of the day, you know, the question kind of swirling around for these past few weeks and months was, what is the state going to do with SRR2 and SRR3? Are they going to let the funds flow to districts as supplemental dollars? Or are they going to try and do what they did with SRR1 and use it to supplant state aid? And so this is kind of just some of the key facts of the, of the three stimulus packages. SRR1 totaled about $1.3 billion for the state. We know, we know the story there. That was, that was used to supplant state aid. SRR2 totals for the state about $5.5 billion. We, and like I mentioned, we don't know what the state is going to do with that money yet. That has not been announced. SRR3, which was passed in March, March of this year, that's part of the American Rescue Plan, that totals $12.4 billion for the state. We know based on today's news that that is going to supplement, that that will be used, that will be supplemental income, or supplemental revenue to your district. That'll be new money. The state will not use it to supplant state dollars. So that's, that's really good news. The allowable uses also change according to the stimulus package. So we know, your, your business office has done all, you know, gone through all the guidance and everything for SRR1, for the CARES Act, and aligned those expenditures with allowable uses under that bill. SRR2 sort of carries over those allowable uses, but clarifies that it can go towards facilities. That was a big question with SRR1, right? Can this money be used for facility expenditures? TEA was a little strict on that. And you had to go to the agency for, for permission and sort of spell out your plan there. With SRR2, the guidance is a little bit clearer that you can use it for air quality and HVAC uses, those kinds of things. And so, you know, that's sort of the tweak that was made with SRR2. SRR3 essentially uses, you can still use the money on all of these allowable uses from SRR1 and SRR2. It builds on that. But it also adds, it's the only package that has a reservation in it, right? And it, you have to reserve at least 20% for addressing learning loss. And you can do that. There's a number of ways to do that that are outlined in the bill. Two, the two listed here are interventions like summer school or after-school programs. All right. And so the news of the day is, again, that the agency is going to make the first, the two-thirds of your SRR3 dollars available. And it's going to flow as a grant similar to the way SRR1 did. You had to go and go on a TEA system and apply for a grant and get a NOGA, a Notice of Grant Award. And all, and that same, those same sort of application mechanics are going to be similar. The main difference, of course, is that it's going to, it's, it's not going to result in a loss of state aid, right? And so the initial allocation for La Jolla that was released by TEA just a couple of hours ago is that this, the first sort of bucket of SRR3 dollars that's available now is $98.2 million. And that's out of a total SRR3 allocation of $147.3 million. And the reason La Jolla isn't, the reason the full amount is not made available now is TEA has to submit a plan to the U.S. Department of Education and work through a couple implementation details. And once that is done, then the remainder will be made available. TEA estimates that'll be, they said, this spring. So not, not a whole, we don't anticipate that taking a whole much longer. And so that's when you'll get the funds, right? You can start, I believe here in the coming days, TEA is going to make an application available on its website. And so, and that'll start sort of when you get the funds. How long you have to spend it is another question. And federal law allows districts to, the grant period ends for SRR3 dollars September 2024. And so you do have time to be thoughtful about your use of these dollars, to plan. In fact, planning is required under both state, well, under federal law as well, you know, given what bills pass and how TEA implements. It's very likely to be required under state rule as well. And so, you know, there's going to, the administration is going to need some time to, to put together, you know, the plan and make sure they're checking all the boxes that are still being decided on by, by state and federal regulators. And so, yes, we're excited that there's, you know, that the allocation was announced today and we have a dollar amount. We could start that planning process. But it is going to be a process. And it will take, you know, school administrators across the state time to work through all of these questions and to make sure that they properly understand the guidance that's coming from, from state and federal agencies. I did just want to point out that there, and I won't go through this with y'all, but if you did have questions about what, what are some of the requirements? And here in the link here, you can, you can access that. We've also sent out an alert, an email update to, to our clients, which include La Jolla administrators there. So they, and again, it's a couple of hours old now. So we're all kind of digesting this together. But there are some initial guidance. TEA has provided some initial guidance today. So to, just to kind of finish up a couple of points here, we've already talked about the funding availability, the end date. You'll see I have 2023 on here. However, through the tidings amendment, that extends that a year. So effectively, September of 2024 is the end of the grant period. The pre-award goes back to March 13th of 2020. And the significance of that date is that's when FEMA announced it, announced COVID as being a national disaster. And so you can see that is, that pre-award start date is consistent across all of the, all of the stimulus packages. And this box right here is a key reason why we got news on SRR3 today. You can see that the requirement on the state for awarding funds is, is different than the other two packages, right? For SRR3, it, the requirement is in an expedited and timely manner, to an extent practicable, not later than 60 days. And so the state was really kind of under the gun here with SRR3. And so that, that kind of forced their hand a little bit and, and making a decision and flowing the funds out when they did. With SRR2, you can see that the deadline there is within a year of receiving funds, which will be around January of next year. So that's, we're kind of going out of order here. We've got SRR3 first, right? That's the news that dropped today. SRR2 is, is, we still kind of, the state has some more time to, to work through its process. And so, you know, they're, they're, they're going to avail themselves of that. And so we'll, we'll know that at a later date. And there has not been any news today on when we may get more clarity on that timeline. So whenever, whenever we do, you guys are welcome to invite me back and I can, I can explain that to y'all as well. I'm going to skip over the maintenance of effort requirements because with SRR3, we, we did, you know, it's, the state's just kind of, it's going to be all supplemental. And so that's not really an issue now with SRR3. I'll just quickly point out that SRR2, the, the package that we don't know much on now, that does have a maintenance of effort requirement. And the state is working through that. It is related to the portion of the budget that's spent on education. And so there is, again, an MOE requirement. With SRR3, one thing I do want to point out for y'all is there's what's called a maintenance of equity requirement. And that, and that's for the state as well. And, and, and so they, and again, with the news today, the, the funds are all going to be supplemental. So this is kind of taken care of from the state's perspective. What I was going to start talking about is there's a local maintenance of equity requirement for SRR3. So this is, this is on, on La Jolla and all the other districts in the state. Again, this is, you know, SRR3 is supplemental now. That's great news. But if there are, if, if you did want to use it to sort of supplant state and local funds at, you know, at the local level, there are some limits there. And so, but what you can see here is you can't disproportionately, in order to receive SRR3 and be in compliance with all those requirements, you can't disproportionately reduce state and local funding or, or per people staff FTEs to your, your, your top ECODIS campuses. And so I know some districts are thinking about making some staffing changes. They had maybe some campuses they felt were overstaffed in prior years. And they were trying to sort of correct that, rebalance some of the staffing allocations in their, in their district. With this provision, you may want to be very careful about any, any staffing changes you make so that, you know, you don't run afoul of this maintenance of equity requirement that's tied up with the, with the SRR3 because it's $147 million for your district, right? And so we want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing the district's ability to access those funds. And so, again, there'll be more guidance from the agency on this as they're sort of putting, putting additional information out. But I just wanted to raise this issue with y'all that there is a local maintenance of equity requirement with SRR3. And so just to be mindful of that and just know that you will, you guys will need to, to work through those issues later on. So again, the news today was all about SRR3. There are other buckets of money in the American Rescue Plan. There is, again, for the state, I don't have exactly La Jolla's share of this. But statewide, there's almost $280 million for IDEA funding. And that's one-year funding. The FCC is developing rules for distributing $7.2 billion. And that's, that's a nationwide figure. Again, we don't have a breakdown for Texas or for La Jolla there. But that, what, those funds would flow similar to the E-Rate program, which is a federal program. These funds would be used for sort of increasing connectivity. So that's another bucket of money in the American Rescue Plan that your district could access once rules sort of are finished being put together. The American Rescue Plan also increased McKinney-Vento funding, which is for, for homeless students. And so, again, another, another stream of federal dollars that will sort of be enhanced under, under the American Rescue Plan. And then this last point was sort of more salient before today. But the point there is that the state of Texas has its own fiscal recovery funds. And so, you know, prior, prior to today, the conversation was about, you know, well, maybe the state, you know, at least for state budget writers were making the argument that, well, we need to use some of the SRR3 dollars to supplant state aid because, because the state has its own budget issues. Now we know that Texas isn't going to do that. But the point here, and it still kind of needs to be made to lawmakers with regards, particularly as we start, now, now the conversation shifts to SRR2. And is the state going to supplant those funds? And so the takeaway here is that the state gets its own pot of money under the American Rescue Plan. It gets, Texas gets $16.7 billion to help plug holes in its own budget. And so it really doesn't need to rely on the SRR2 or, or, you know, the SRR dollars to, 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 for its own budget purposes. It, it's got its own pot under the American Rescue Plan. And so there are a number of bills moving through the legislature that would distribute, sort of add additional requirements to the SRR dollars, given today's news and that they're just going to flow those, the SRR3 money to districts just as, you know, with regards to federal statute and, and as federal statute requires. Perhaps these two bills could determine how SRR2 money is distributed to districts. And so that's really, we don't think that, that these will really apply to SRR3. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. Okay, all right. Well, I'll go ahead and wrap up. I'm getting, I'm getting the, the music to play me off here. So I'll go ahead and wrap up. If you guys have any questions, these slides are in, in the presentation. And feel free to ask me, feel free to shoot any questions my way. And Mr. Lopez can direct those to me. So thank you again, and I'll, I'll pause for questions here.
Thank you, Mr. Haney.
Okay, moving on to the next one, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one will be the 2021-22 TASB Pay System Maintenance Draft.
Thank you. Ms. Claudia Rodriguez, Executive Director for Human Resources, will lead this discussion.
In your packet, you will have today's presentation for the workshop under Section 2. We're bringing to you the new position that was approved during last allocations. And so in consultation with TASB, this position would be at a pay grade nine, 226 days. And again, this is one is in Section 2. We have some directors that have requested reclassification of positions through our Curriculum and Instruction Department. The Special Ed Department has requested to speech assistants be reclassified to speech-language pathologists. We calculated the estimated increase on there, the total cost for these two reclassifications. We are making a notation on there. One individual will be completing graduation requirements and will be pending licensure in the summer. The second individual is stated to complete the master courses in December. And we anticipate having that licensure available also in December or January. So we're bringing these two, this reclassification to you. Also, under Curriculum and Instruction, the Instructional Resource and Technology Department is requesting the network supervisor, E-Rate specialist, be, have a title change to Cybersecurity Coordinator. I did consult with the TASB consultant, Luz Cadena. We reviewed the job description, the key criteria that was in there. And there was no increase in amount. The individual had already absorbed these duties for a couple of years when we made the changes within our policies that we require to have Cybersecurity Coordinator available in the district. So this one would be a title change only. So with this new position and the reclassified position, this would be an additional cost of $137,646.58. Questions on these? The next section in your binder are the stipends. We have left the stipends as is. We did not make any changes to the stipends. So I will just go through it briefly. We have already been paying out the ESL, I'm sorry, ESL dual-language stipends will be paid out at the end of this year. And we've been working with the bilingual department. We did not include any additional stipends in athletics other than we added the golf coach position and assistant golf coach that had been omitted. So we did include that in Page 7. In Page 8, we included, I included the positions for the elementary soccer league and the electronic sports that were brought to you at the previous board meeting. And so I included that information on Page 8. And all the other stipends are stipends that had already been approved during the year and that we included them in the, our compensation stipends for next year. I did include the information for Project Rise, which you have on Page 19. Project Rise, this is in their last year. However, we did have a committee meeting within the past two weeks. They are recommending, recommending additional stipends for some of our campus staff. And so we're including it on there. We do have additional stipends may be paid out as determined by the Region 1 Project Rise Committee. And we do have central office and campus administrators that serve on these committees. We expect to have all of these stipends paid out by August at the latest. The last item that we included in this section was the teacher incentive allotment. We halted collecting data this year. However, we will, we should be receiving some funds that will need to be paid out by August of this year to the teachers at the, to the teachers at the four Project Rise campuses that have already been designated to, have a designation of recognized exemplary or master. And I included the information on here for Cohort C, which would be all of our other campus. That 2021-22 school year will serve as a data collection year. Any questions on the stipends?
The only thing that I would like to see, Ms. Rodriguez, and it's something that has started since the pandemic and just because I've been serving in that crisis team. And I know that some individuals put extra time and effort almost on call 24/7 and have worked extra vaccine clinics too, and even with our COVID center. I don't know if in discussion with the administration or your I don't know if in discussion with the administration or your cabinet, when you are sitting down making the decisions for the budget, if you all have had conversations about, like Mr. Eli Rodriguez, that has taken a new role, added duties with the COVID Center. And of course, he ment his department. And then, of course, I mean, I don't know the dynamics and salaries, right? And also, even like Chief Rodriguez, I mean, not Chief Rodriguez, I'm sorry, Chief Gonzalez, that has been on foot, you know, in extra hours. So, I don't know if you've considered those conversations. I mean, this year has not looked the same as previous years. And I know, Dr. Science, that you can, you know, witnessed all the long hours that a lot of people have taken. And you know those individuals that are at the crack of dawn and have left after hours and are on call all the time. So, these two individuals come to mind that they go that extra mile. I mean, they do their job, but they're also doing that extra for us.
And I'll go ahead and agree with Ms. Ochoa. I mean, and I know there's some people out there as well, but I do totally agree on that.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa, Mr. Salinas. Well, the cabinet will take under consideration.
The next section.
Dr. Science, before we move on, I would also like for you to consider on the classification of positions, to look at the PEP supervisor, to review her duties and see if it merits a reclassification.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides, we will consider that.
Which position is that? I didn't get that.
The PEP supervisor. I think Ms. Ludi, I don't know her new last name. Yeah.
So, then the next section in your binder are the Administrative Guidelines and the Employee Compensation Plan. This right here governs how we calculate the salaries. So, on Page Two, it gives you the compensation policy and a description of the pay system that we use. And so, this one is very detailed. And due to time restraints, I mean, unless you all have any specific questions on here, I am going to move on to the next section for the TASB review. Under Section Five is where we start our pay system review draft that we've met with the TASB consultant, that we submitted our data to. And so, these are the, on Page One, these are the districts that they pool salaries from to compare our district salaries. And so, you can see Donna Edinburgh, Carlin Jean Laredo, McAllen, Mission, and so forth. So, we've got those districts there. On the next page, you're going to see our teacher salary plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Please keep in mind that this is only the new higher salary, teacher salary that we had this past year. The orange line is the district salary, the blue line is the market median. The next page is, you'll see where our starting teacher salary falls. The orange line is our starting teacher salary of $51,000. At zero years of experience, we do fall behind two of our neighboring districts, PSJA and Mission. And then, at the five-year mark, you can see where, also, we're at $53,110, $55,460 at the 10-year mark and so forth. And again, this is only our new teacher hiring schedule. The salaries for our current teachers are above these marks. On the next page, you will see the teacher stipend comparison, where a general masters in our district, we do pay that out at $1,000. Subject area masters, we do pay out at $4,000 for, at content at the comprehensive high schools. The secondary math is $2,500, and the secondary science is $2,500. These are specific teaching certifications that are sometimes difficult to fill. So, you can see there that our subject area masters, I mean, is $2,000 above the median stipend. And the average stipend is $2,331. And so, you can see where the majority of ours are either on par with other districts or slightly above. We do not offer special education stipends, and we have started offering the bilingual ESL stipend.
Ms. Rodriguez, can I please interrupt just for the record to state that Ms. Espirito arrived at the meeting at 5:30?
The next page indicates our teacher incentive comparison. This is for our department chairs or grade-level chairs, elementary, middle, and high school, our mentor teachers. And then, we do not offer foreign language stipends nor signing bonuses on there. So, you can see where ours are either at or above the median stipend. The next page is the distribution of our total teacher experience. You're going to see that we have approximately 2,000 teachers in the district. 1,000 have less than 12 years of experience, and approximately 1,000 have more than 12 years of experience. So, we have an equal distribution in there within the years of experience of our teachers. Page Seven, you're going to see the total experience of our newly hired teachers, librarians, and nurses for this school year. We had a total of 40 new hires when we reported this information to TASB. We had 22 with zero years of experience, 12 with one to five years, three with six to 10 years, two with 11 to 15, and 16-plus years of experience, we had one. So, you can see that our new hires, we get them with either zero to five years of experience. The next page is our new hire teaching salary at a 1.5 general pay increase that TASB prepared for us with a starting salary of $52,150. This one would be a $900 general pay increase for our teachers with adjustments needed. So, that way, any new hire would not come in earning more than our current teachers. The next page, you'll see at that 1.5 general pay increase, the green dotted line would place us, is where La Jolla ISD would be next year with the teacher starting salary. The orange one is our current salary, and the blue one is the market median. On Page 10, you will see a 2% general pay increase. This one, we would see the teachers getting a $1,200 increase with adjustments as needed at different years. And our starting salary would still be at $52,150. The next page, you will see where the district would fall. The green line would be our starting plan for our new teachers, nurses, and librarians. The orange one is the La Jolla ISD salary, and the blue one is the market median. So, we are above the market median in both plans.
Is there a reason, Ms. Rodriguez, why the 20-plus teachers don't get a stipend? I mean, I've always voiced.
A 20-plus, a stipend?
Yeah. I mean, not a stipend, I'm sorry, a pay increase, like what's being proposed on both. I see that all years of experience from zero to 19 have an additional proposed on both. But on 20-plus, it does not. Is there a reason for that?
This would only be for new hires. So, if we get any teacher from another district or that had resigned and retired, and now we're bringing them onboard, this would be the starting salary that we would start them at. So, it's not our current teachers. The salary that you're seeing at $62,598, this is only for our brand-new teachers if they come to us with 20-plus years of experience.
Okay, so it wouldn't.
It doesn't impact the current teachers that we have, because we more than likely have teachers with 20-plus years that are higher than the $62,598. On Page 12, you will see some of our administrative positions that are key positions that can be compared with other districts. You're going to see the sweet spot for the market value of the position is anywhere between 90 to 110% of the midpoint. The midpoint is the market value of the position on there. So, on these, you're going to see that out of the 28 positions, seven of them are above 110% of the market value of the position, 20 are within the range, one does fall slightly below. And that one is the Chief Academic Officer, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, at 89%.
Did you say that they still look at 90 to 110%? That's what they're looking at to be comparable?
Yes, ma'am, 90 to 110%. So, look at the job market of the, the market value of the position, we're looking at at least maybe six years of experience in the actual position. And that's what would put them at the market value. The next set of positions are professional positions within our business office. There are some athletic trainers on here, diagnosticians, energy managers, head football coaches. So, there's additional group here that TASB compares in its 23 key positions that they look at. Of these positions, we do have four that are above 110% of the market value, 18 at the market value. And this is the summary of pay in comparison to the market. So, we do get complimented from TASB that we do have good salaries, paying salaries for our administrative and professional.
The percentages look really, really good, just based on the importance of instruction and based on the learning loss that kids have incurred. I would like to recommend that we consider at least moving the Chief Academic Officer to 90%. And I don't know if a change was done when Mr. Munoz moved from Human Resources. I know that's a different pay scale to the curriculum side. I don't know if this 89% already indicates his change.
No, ma'am, it does not.
It does not. And once you make that change, let us know the percentage, because I would like to recommend that he be at least at the 90%.
We've already calculated that information, so we'll be reviewing that. This is our, the next page is our current pay versus our current structure. All of these triangles are individuals that are, fall either within our pay structure or above. The next page is the structured development of our administrative education. These are mostly our professionals that have either ESPEC certificates or we have in the Administrative Education Compensation Plan. You can see where, lost my place, where the current midpoint is that pinkish line on there. The average market value of the position are the triangles. The average district pay are the blue squares. And the proposed midpoint, you can see where there is a heftier increase once we start at our principles. So, this job market rate is increasing. The next one is our proposed pay versus our proposed structure, because we will be presenting to you the 3% adjusted increase within the minimum, mid, and max of the positions. And here's our new education pay plan. And it is a 3% adjustment from what we currently have in place. No positions other than one position, which is the coordinator, athletic, head football coach. This recommendation is being made that we put it at a pay grade four, but no additional adjustments are needed. It's just a week, the salaries are above the maximum of the position for the pay grade two, even the pay grade three. So, the TASB recommendation is that we adjust this one to a pay grade four. But no salary increases are required. On Page 23, you'll start seeing the current pay versus the current structure for the administrative management. And these are people that are on our business side. And you can see there the triangles are the employees and how they fall within these ranges. The administrative management structure development is on Page 24. And again, you can see where the average district pay are those blue squares on there. The average market value of the position are the triangles. Our current midpoint is the pink line, and the proposed midpoint is the dash line on there. Page 25 is the proposed pay versus the proposed structure. And so, on this one, they did identify some key positions that are above the maximum of the pay grade for the position. The next couple of pages indicate our new proposed administrative management pay plan, again, also with a 3% adjustment. On Page 28, this is the market comparison for clerical and technical positions. Again, within these positions, on Page 29, you will see the summary that there's 22 key positions here within our clerical that can be compared. And two are above 110% of the market value of the position, and 20 are within the range of the 90 to 110 within the comparison to the market. The next group is the same one, but on Page 31, you're going to be, you're going to see a summary of the minimum comparison to the market. And again, these, we have four over that 110%, and 18 are at the market between 90 and 110%. So, they're not making any recommended changes within this category either. The next page, 32, you will see the current pay versus the current structure for the administrative support. And again, all of those are our employees and where they fall within the pay structure. And here's the administrative support structure development. And so, we're looking at blue, the average district pay, the triangle, average market value, our current midpoint, and our proposed midpoint. This is our proposed pay versus our proposed structure. And where we will still have some positions above the maximum amount of the position. And our proposed administrative support plan, we no longer have any positions at a pay grade one. So, these do start at a pay grade two, and these as well have been adjusted by 3%. On Page 38, you will see, these are our instructional support at the campus. So, these, we were pulled out several years ago, so that way, we could put them on a pay scale on their own. And so, we have our classroom teacher aides, our library aide, the LVNs, the parent community engagement educator, and our instructional assistants in general ed and special ed. There are six positions, and all of them are at the market between the 90 and 110%. And again, you'll see the same, the current pay versus the current structure, where our staff fall within the instructional support. Keep in mind, the blue is the average district pay. And so, we are above the midpoint of the position. We do recognize that our instructional assistants with the bachelor's degrees, we do pay them at a higher pay amount as well. The next is the proposed pay plan versus the proposed structure. And this would be the instructional support pay plan, also with a 3% adjustment. The next group.
Claudia, Claudia.
Yes, ma'am.
Please explain the 3% adjustment. I want to make sure I'm following you.
Every year, TASB looks at the market value of the positions, and within our structure, it allows us to. it allows us to move the minimum, mid, and max by increasing them 3% to keep up with the cost of living, so they're moved up 3%.
And that's just in general, everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
The next group that we're looking at is our auxiliary group. These are 26 key positions that Tasby identifies and compares against other districts. In here, we are looking at three positions being above 110%. We have 18 positions at 90 to 110% of the midpoint. We do have three positions that are below less than 90% with the electricians, the electronic technicians, and the transportation supervisors.
You're talking about the ones that were over the 110%, like the one that has 114? You said there was three, the one that has 120?
And 112.
And one?
There are three that have been identified above the 110, but there are three that have also been identified that are less than 90% of the midpoint value of the position.
Okay, so yeah, there's one at 120, 135.
And when we go back and we review, it might be some of our employees that have been with us for several years, and they have benefited from the raises that the district has provided. And so there, when we review an individual salary, we go back and look at what did the board approve during those years, and we match it up to make sure that they have the You have on page, make sure I'm on the right page, page 46 and 47, we are looking at the market median comparisons on here. And so within these, there is only one position comparison to the market that is below the Here is the current pay of our auxiliary. You're going to see on the right-hand side, there is a separate box on there, that is for our bus drivers. A couple of years, Tasby, a couple of years ago, Tasby made the recommendation that we separate the transportation department, or at least for the bus drivers, separate and apart from our auxiliary pay plan, because this, the market rate for bus drivers was increasing faster than just all auxiliary. So then we made the decision to remove that one, and so we look at those individually. Here's the structured development for the auxiliary. And you'll see the proposed pay plan versus the structure, the auxiliary pay plan. In this one, they are recommending that our custodial managers be moved up to a pay grade seven. However, their salary ranges are already within the range, so they are recommending only an adjustment to move them to pay grade seven, and therefore, any raises, future raises would be calculated at a higher pay grade. The next page would be the auxiliary placement scale for our bus drivers. Currently, our starting salary for the bus drivers with zero years of experience is $14. This new one recommends that we start at $14.50. We can see that the transportation, I mean, is moving at a higher rate than other positions. The next couple of pages are the summary costs that Tasby has provided for us for the 1.5% increase and the 2% general pay increase. And so on tab six, we went ahead and broke it down a little bit more, that way we could make it a little clearer on there. For the teachers, librarians, and registered nurses, if we do a $900 increase with a 1.5%, it would cost the district an additional 1.8 million. We also would process the adjustments that Tasby is recommending, so for an increase of 1.8 million. Option two is the 1,200 increase. It would cost the district an additional 2.4 million with the adjustments as well. And so we can see with the administrative education, the administrative management, the administrative support and instructional support, and the auxiliary staff. We had a total of 4,176 employees when we did this data review. The total cost estimate for each pay plan right there with 1.5% increase or 2%. We also added the current payroll costs. So for '21, '22, the payroll costs are included in there. The 1.5% would cost the district 208,683,487. The 2% increase would be 209,683,724. Do we have any questions?
Yes, maybe that was a question that I should have asked the other gentleman, but like the district can use the relief fund to pay the, to pay these raises, increases in COVID stipends, or no?
By what I was hearing on there, and I saw in the presentation, I made notes that we had to be careful to supplement salaries on there, so.
We're still waiting for guidance, so we'll wait and see. However, one of the things that is on the presentation from Mr. Haney is that it is going to be coming down through Title I.
Yes.
Federal funds. So whatever guidelines apply to Title I federal funds would apply to this. There are some staffing that we do pay through Title I, and so it might be that it applies to stuff that you normally would pay through Title I, but we still have to wait for guidance on how we can use the funds.
Dr. Science, well, Ms. Hernandez, do you have another question?
No, that's it.
This one's also related, and I probably should have asked it when he was presenting. But on ESTAR III, it says that at least 20% must be to a reserve to address learning loss. So I want to make sure that we do have that 20%, if not more.
Yes.
To make sure, because I understand that the criteria for becoming an A district or B district is going to remain the same regardless of what happened with the pandemic. And I know that the students are going to need a lot of help to catch them up. So I want to make sure that we have that 20%, if not more, dedicated to the children's learning loss, and to make sure that we catch them up.
Yes, that's going to be part of those requirements, and definitely, we will need at least that much. We probably will need more than that. And later on today, we are going to talk about resilient schools, which we, that is a planning program that we have, a recovery, COVID recovery planning program that does rely on planning for student interventions for next year. So we'll talk a little bit about that.
And I would like, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I would like a work session just on the ESTAR funds, ESTAR I, ESTAR II, and ESTAR III, and the requirements, and what the expenses that are allowed, so that we make sure, like he mentioned, that we don't jeopardize losing any of our $147 million, and that we follow, you know, exactly, which relates to Ms. Hernandez's question.
Thank you, Dr. Menendez.
So we have a work session just for that, and not in a hurry, so that we can really ask questions, and we can feel comfortable in the decisions that we're making, and the things that we're approving, and that we're following all the guidelines.
Definitely, we will do that. As soon as we get the guidance ourselves, we will schedule a work session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Next up, guys, would be the discussion of the preliminary budget, '21, '22.
Good afternoon. So I'll just run over some assumptions that we currently have for this budget plan as far as revenue goes. At a high level, we're assuming a 3.83 drop in ADA, and this was a, some conversations that we had back in December with the Student Services Department and other departments like Special Pops. So it was a consent, I mean, a consensus of how the trend would go as far as ADA goes. This chart pretty much shows us.
Excuse me, Mr. Lopez, let me just say, Board of Trustees, this is Section 7 in your binder.
Pardon.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
So 3.81 drop in ADA. This chart pretty much shows that we're assuming a drop of about 900 students in ADA for the next school year. Okay. So another, some other assumptions that we're tying into the actual revenue. We actually got a preliminary certified estimate from the appraisal district at a 6.22% growth. And as you know, if, as that number goes up, our state revenue would be going down. So that's an important number to keep, keep a close eye on. We'll also be applying 17 Tier 2 pennies, like we did last year, disaster pennies because of Hurricane Hannah, which happened on July 25, 2020. We already have legal counsel come up with a resolution and an opinion letter on it. So that right now puts us at a 1.0443 MNO rate, a 0.2427 INS rate, so a total tax rate of 1.2870. Something that we have to revisit would be the INS piece. We still have to meet with our financial advisor to come, come up with a more precise number on that. And also, we currently do not have any federal revenue numbers for the federal grants, and we should be getting those in a couple, couple of weeks. And as, as you guys just heard, we got the update on ESTAR II and ESTAR III, but when we did this plan, we had no idea what they were going to decide on. So that's something that just came in. And so these numbers are based on everything, not including the ESTAR revenue. So this is pretty much the same thing that you guys seen in the past. It pretty much sums up our assumptions, and it gives you the certified values, the tax levy at the 98%. And like Gloria stated, I mean, we're assuming a 2% pay increase. So the next two slides you'll see will show you a profit and loss statement based on the revenue we calculated and the 2% growth, I mean, 2% pay raise on the salaries. So at this point, I'll have Ben Gartson come in and step, and talk about the actual, the profit and loss statement.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Okay, on this page here, it's the, it's the budget summary at 2% as Mr. Lopez alluded to for a salary increase at midpoint for all employees. Again, this is a preliminary budget, and as you can see, I'll focus on the subtotal on that page. We are at a deficit of $21,248,000. There is some massaging that we have to do on some of these departments. All departments are reviewing what they have to make some adjustments and to come, to try to balance out what we're trying to get to. Our federal funds, like Mr. Lopez said, was that our entitlements have not been posted on our, on the TEA website, therefore, they're not balanced at this point. Once we get those numbers, which will be coming in about two more weeks, we'll be able to balance the federal funds that are stated there, the federal funds, the 200 funds. On the following page, we have the appropriations by functions. Again, this is at a 2% increase in salaries for all employees. And for the general fund, we're looking at a, at this point, at this moment in time, $21,882,000 as a deficit budget at this moment. So again, we are still looking at these numbers, we're still massaging it. Again, this is preliminary, and I, that's all I have to say. If you have any questions?
That means that on page six, we are 2 million over budgeted. Is that correct?
On page six? Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
And that means that special education, early education, college and career readiness, and the general fund, plus a few, couple of others, are over budgeted based on the monies that we're going to be getting coming in, based on what you had at the time that you did this.
Correct.
Yes, this is the preliminary budget, and we still need to work with those directors or those areas to work on those items that are still over budgeted.
That is correct.
Including the general fund.
Yes, yes.
The 6, 6.9. So we do need to work on, on those, either with those directors or on those funds to bring them more into balance.
Were we able to, on this year's budget, I remember, if I remember correctly, you, Mr. Trevino told us that we had spent, I want to say 12 million, please don't quote me, because I don't remember exactly, but that we were going to get some reimbursement for some of those monies. Were we able to get that reimbursement from those, from that CARE?
The CARES Act.
Act.
At that time, at that time, Mr. Trevino reported a certain amount that we had been reimbursed. We have not been reimbursed any more than that, but we have been submitting more items for reimbursement, more technology purchases, but we have not been reimbursed any more than what was reported at that time. And maybe that's another item that we can just bring back, just to relook at that again, because we've had even, you know, additional technology purchases that qualify for reimbursement, and we have been submitting them as we have made the technology purchases, but we have not received the reimbursement yet. So we'll bring that information to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Menendez.
Okay, moving on to the next one, guys, that'd be the discussion on the contract evaluation
The next item is to look, Board of Trustees, at the evaluation matrices for different purchases. You had asked to look at those again. And so on tab eight, in your binder, you will see that we have the four different matrices that we used. And so the first one is the non-federally funded procurement matrix, and you see there, that one has a total of 100 points. The next one that you see is the evaluation matrix for federally funded procurement, also 100 points, and you see how they're distributed. Then the third matrix that we use is non-federally funded, the evaluation matrix for professional services, non-federally funded. And then the last one is the evaluation matrix for facilities and construction. So those are the four different matrices that have been, that were approved by the board, I believe, last year. And you asked to review those again, so is there any discussion on any of those?
I just, I just have a question. Who decides how many points who gets for each item, exactly?
There usually is a committee that reviews submitted bids, and that committee awards points based on the matrix. And the committee depends on the purchase, right? Whether it's a, you know, CNI purchase, then there will be CNI staff members. If it's a construction one, then usually it's the facility staff. So it's different committee members based on the matrix, I mean, excuse me, on the purchase that award the points. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ms. Zapata?
Dr. Science, I would like for you to add, just for our purposes, you said this was approved last year?
Yes.
So maybe at the bottom, just the date that it was approved, and that way we know, you know, when it was last reviewed.
At the very, good, good evening, Mr. Salinasen, our school board. At the bottom right, I'm sorry, at the bottom left, we have 022.
I see it now. I was. I was covering it with my hand. I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
But I see it very good.
So our school board initially approved these matrices, as Dr. Science said.
So these were just approved in February of this year?
Of 2020.
Oh, 2020, last year, a year ago.
I think the only one that we were questioning last, or two weeks ago, was the one that was given 2 points, except for when it comes to professional services, it's been given 3 points, a lot of 3 points. And it's a vendor's past relationship with the district. I think that's the one we were kind of questioning. If a vendor has never worked with our district, they're given a 0, and we were just questioning how fair that was.
And that was actually a criterion that was suggested in February of 2020. We used to have it at 3 points, so we adjusted it to 2.
But that, we want to see if we can change the whole question. Can we change the question? I mean, because-
The question in of itself cannot be changed for the standard evaluation matrix because that's how it is defined by the state. Texas Education Code 44.031 has specific, specific criteria that we must use, and that is the wording from the law. Now, we, our school board has liberty as far as the allocation of points.
And we kept the professional services at 3? That's the only one we kept at 3?
That one we kept at 3, but any of them can be changed at the board's discretion.
Maybe that's something that we need to consider in changing it, because we do want to attract also new vendors.
Ms. Zapata, so you're saying that it has to stay the vendor's past relationship with the district? Like, that's something, we can't say with districts, like if they have, if they work at another district, it has to be worded that way?
Correct. Now, considering their business- I'm sorry. We can consider their performance with other districts, and that we take into account on number 2, the reputation of the vendor and of the vendor's goods and services.
Can you repeat how that would be, Ms. Zapata, please?
Yes, Dr. Science. So Dr. Cantu was asking whether we could consider the vendor's relationship with other districts. And my response is that under the non-federally funded procurement, number 2, the reputation of the vendor and of the vendor's goods and services, that's where we take into consideration the vendor's performance in other districts as well. So when we do our vendor reference checks and we contact other districts, that's where we take their service, their performance into consideration.
Dr. Science, I would just like maybe to, for you, if you can tell us, not now, but later in the next board meeting maybe, or just a graph or information on who by department is in those committees? So we haven't more or less exactly know who, who makes the decisions when it comes to the point basis by department.
Yes, Mr. Cantu will do that. Thank you, sir. So are we saying then that we would change number 2 and not have number 5 on the non-federally funded procurement?
No.
No, we just change number 2 and leave number 5?
I mean, that's what I think.
That's, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
That is what you guys, Dr. Cantu?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
How is that again, Dr. Science?
That we would change number 2 the way you stated, and number 5 stays the way it is.
I, I think she said it the way it is. She just said that in number 2, they take into account, and tell me if I'm wrong, Ms. Zapata, that in number 2, they take into account experience with other districts. And that was Dr. Cantu's question. That if we could take into account if they have experience, maybe not in our district, but with other districts. And your response was yes. That is taken into account in number 2.
Correct.
Okay, so for legal, do we bring it back on the next agenda, or?
Yes, if there's a change on it, on them, we will need for, to bring them as an action item at the next-
But we're not making a change.
But we're not making a change.
If we make a change.
Yeah, unless I'm understanding wrong.
Yeah, we're not making it.
We're not making a change.
I'm not seeing it here, but I'm going to take it and talk out here.
Yeah, it's just a terrification. Now, if we want to make a change in, in the one that you all mentioned, the vendor's past relation, and if you want to give it 1 point and 0 points if they don't, well then that would be a change, and that would have to be brought back.
For example, the item number 2, give it the full 5 and give the other one a 1.
And you could make the other one 1, and if they don't have experience, well then they get a 0.
I think so. If they have it, yes, they get a 1, or they don't, no. But make the other one a full 5, I would say.
I'm good with that.
That can be a good compromise, yeah.
Okay, so, so is everyone, are we good with that?
Yeah, as long as legal's good and, and it's just for the record. But we can always-
Are we good, Mr. Castillo, Ms. Zapata?
So what we're doing is we're pulling up the criteria that is, that is required, just so y'all can see it.
No, no, no.
And it's right here, 1 through 9. This is like Ms. Zapata said in statute, that the district shall consider when awarding contracts. Now where the, where the school board has some latitude is in the points that are awarded. And you could add anything in addition to what's already there that you guys think are relevant.
No, I think we're okay. We're okay. We understand, we cannot-
I think it's just in the points. We were just saying in the point.
Yeah.
Just change the points. But we're, they're okay with the, with the actual criteria.
Okay, and well, the point that I wanted to make was if you guys want an item on there for the district to specifically consider past services to other districts, you could add that if you would like. Number 2 probably would include that, but it could also include the reputation of their work that they did with commercial clients as well. But, I mean, we could do a full kind of, we could bring some different examples for y'all. Sorry, can y'all hear me? I gotta, I gotta whisper to speak into the mic.
I think, I mean, I don't know, but I think we're okay if we just change the numerical point.
Okay.
And from the 2 to a 1, and add a 1 to the one that had the 4, number 2. If we do that, I think that's what we're trying to say.
That's correct.
That's correct. So we'll, so number 2 will be 5 points, and-
Number 5 will be 1 point.
And number 5 will be 1 point, and is it the board's decision to do likewise on all, on all the evaluation matrices?
I think it's just that one, no?
Or just, only the standard and the federal, or all? Because we will have to adjust the professional services, being that that one was already at 5 points for reputation and 3 points for number 4.
I guess, I mean, we need to be aligned with all of them, that's what you're asking, right?
For all of them.
So be aligned with all?
Yes, the same thing.
Anything else, guys?
On the number 6, we don't, we don't look at that, Ms. Zapata? Because I see that there's no points in there, but it's also named.
Correct. On, okay, on number 6, that's for the historically underutilized businesses. So the federal government wants us to give those types of businesses consideration, but there is no specific guidance as far as us having to assign points. So we have it here as a reminder for us to consider it, consider it on the federally funded, and we listed on the non-federally funded, but there are no state laws governing us to assign points. If the board wishes to do that, then we could do so.
Okay, so we could have, on the number 5, we could have actually just leave it with that a, a number there. Could we do that?
Well, on that one, the state law is, we have on the screen, says we shall consider that, okay? The distinction with number 6 is that it states that impact on the ability of the district to comply with laws relating to historically underutilized businesses. And there are no state laws requiring us to do so. That's the distinction with number 6.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Zapata. Thank you, Ms. Zapata.
Thank you, Ms. Zapata.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, guys, it's 6:29 during this meeting. And for legal, we can go ahead and start since it was already posted like that. So at this time, at 6:29, I'm calling the regular board meeting to order. Going with roll call.
Espiochoa, President.
Nereida Cantu, President.
I don't know if we can start at 6:29, because it's advertised at 6:30.
Yeah, but we can start.
Oh, okay.
Right, legal, because it says-
Actually, it's posted at 6:30 PM.
Or immediately following, that's why I asked.
It's 6:30, yeah.
That's how it's posted.
Alex Cantu, President.
So we think we're good to go.
Now we're good.
Okay. All righty, so 6, so the roll calls are, next bid, I do declare a quorum and the platoilages.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doc. Next, no public comments. So if I can attain a motion for items 5 and 6, which is the text collector and the regular call meeting.
So move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those appearing in the game, by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
On the, on number, on the approval of the minutes for April 14th, I would just like to make a correction, that I asked for the item to be brought back under human resources. That I asked for it to include, that I asked for it to be brought back with the names of the other staff members that were assisting in carrying out the duties, and that they be included in a citation.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's item number 1, and that was under human resources.
Thank you, Dr. Renamis. Blanca, can you note that, please, for the record?
So move to approve with the corrections indicated.
Okay, so can I have a second on that, guys, with the change?
Second.
All those, all those appearing in the game, by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, and.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Under the superintendent's report, the first item is the enrollment report. It's the enrollment report dated April 20th, 2021. On this day, we had 12,245 elementary students, 14,507 secondary students, for a total of 26,752, which is 587 students less than on this date last year. Are there any questions on the enrollment report?
I don't have any questions on the enrollment report, but like I mentioned last time, in the second board meeting of next month in May, I would like for us to hear an attendance report of all the campuses that met the goal, all the campuses that didn't meet the goal, and the amount of money that we lost as a result of the campuses not meeting the goal.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Benavides. We have that scheduled.
Thank you.
The next item on the superintendent's report is recognition of outstanding service award for principals for the month of April. Mr. Martin Munoz, Assistant Superintendent for CNI, will do this recognition.
Good afternoon, Board President, Mr. Salinas, Madam Superintendent, Dr. Science, members of the board, and members of the community. I thank you for allowing us to recognize another one of our outstanding principals with the outstanding principals award, the outstanding service award. School leadership requires bold and innovative thinking aimed at accomplishing campus and district goals. Brian Tracy referenced the Big Five in his book, The Power of Purpose. Goals entail the target and the combined step-by-step plans for the activities that will bring value, vision, purpose, and mission to reality. We want to recognize Ms. Ivana Ayala, Principal at Palm U High School, for her innovative leadership to improve safety procedures using the Skyward Health Screener. Ms. Ayala and her staff are committed to student and staff safety while meeting the students' and campus academic goals. We recognize Ms. Ivana Ayala, Principal at Palm U High School. Thank you.
Let me just say that all recognized students and staff are joining us through Facebook Live.
Job well done.
The next item is recognition of La Jolla Early College High School Principal Domingo Villarreal III for being nominated and selected as a finalist for the 2020-2021 Association of Texas Professional Educators, ATPE, Charles Pickett Educator of the Year Award in the Administrator category. Melinda Flores, our Executive Director for High Schools, will do this recognition.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Salinas, Board members, our Superintendent, and members of our virtual community. I'm Melinda Flores, the Executive Director for High Schools under curriculum evaluate, curriculum and instruction, I'm sorry. And we're just honored to recognize Mr. Domingo Villarreal III. Mr. Villarreal participated in the interview process for this, for this category this past Saturday, and ATPE will be announcing the recipient at their conference being held this summer. So we do wish Mr. Domingo Villarreal III the best of luck with this prestigious award, and we'd like to take the opportunity to thank our Superintendent and our distinguished board for your continued support for all of our administrator students and staff. Thank you very much. And Mr. Villarreal is joining us live. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Villarreal, for job well done.
The next recognition is recognition of UIL Academics Elementary District Champions. This recognition will be done by Irma Tijerina, our Elementary UIL Coordinator.
At this time, we will be recognizing our Elementary UIL District Champions. These students placed first in one or more events in the Virtual Elementary UIL District Meet that took place from February 25th to March 6th. They are joining us today through social media. Before I begin, I would like to thank the parents of these students and of all the UIL participants. Thank you, parents, for encouraging your children to participate in UIL in spite of it being such a challenging year. I would also like to thank all the UIL coaches for their continued commitment to the program and for being able to adapt and adjust to all the changes that took place this year. Lastly, I would like to- and adjust to all the changes that took place this year. Lastly, I would like to thank my amazing team of campus coordinators. Thank you, coordinators, for working alongside me to make this unprecedented UIL season possible. I will now begin with our second-grade district In chess puzzle, we had Ezekiel Salinas from JFK Elementary. In creative writing, we had Eva Velázquez from JFK Elementary. In Spanish creative writing, Yaneesi Torres from Diaz Villarreal Elementary. In music memory, we had Javier Science from Leo Elementary. In number sense, we had Brandon García from Tabasco Elementary. In oral reading, we had Maite Rodríguez from Benson Elementary. In Spanish poetry, we had Iker Maltoz from JFK Elementary. In spelling, we had Saída Gajona from Diaz Villarreal Elementary. In storytelling, we had Dominic Jiménez from Peña Elementary. Moving on to our third-grade district champions. In calculator application, we had Ariana Ochoa from Mendiola Elementary. In chess puzzle, we had Abraham Cuellar from Escandon Elementary. We also had Joshua Robles from Diaz Villarreal Elementary. In dictionary skills, we had Jul Delagarsa from Eby Reyna Elementary. In listening skills, we had Haley Hernández from San Fredice Elementary. In mathematics and number sense, we had Noah Ordaz from JFK Elementary. In music memory, we had Zoe Calzada from Tabasco Elementary, and Alondra Uresti from Pérez Elementary. In oral reading, we had Melody Rodríguez from Benson Elementary. In Spanish poetry, we had Dylan Rodríguez from Chapa Elementary. In ready writing, we had Joselyn López from Escandon Elementary. In spelling, we had Deborah Sarate from San Fredice Elementary. And in storytelling, we had Cristian Galván from Eby Reyna Elementary. And those were our third-grade district champions. Moving on to fourth grade. In art, we had Isleni Valdés from Tabasco Elementary. In calculator application, we had Cristo Rodríguez from Mendiola Elementary. In chess puzzle, we had Daniel Santiago from Camarena Elementary. In dictionary skills, we had Julián Perales from Kika Delagarsa Elementary. In listening skills, we had Abby Terrazas from Clinton Elementary. In maps, graphs, and charts, we had Rocío Salazar from Mendiola Elementary. In mathematics, we had Arturo Chávez from JFK Elementary. In music memory, we had Ariana Ramírez from Cabazos Elementary. In number sense, we had Mia De La Rosa from San Fredice Elementary. In oral reading, we had Dulce Fernanda Torres from Escandon Elementary. In Spanish poetry, we had Cassandra García from Benson Elementary. In ready writing, we had Ariel Beltrán from Cabazos Elementary. In science, we have Rogelio Gutiérrez from Benson Elementary. And in spelling, we had Yael Segura from Benson Elementary and Sofia Hidalgo from Camarena Elementary. And those were our fourth-grade district champions. Moving on to fifth grade. In art, we had Jalen González from Escandon Elementary. In calculator application and ready writing, we had Enrique Hernández from Mendiola Elementary. In chess puzzle, we had Hector Castillo from Cabazos Elementary. In dictionary skills and mathematics, we had Aimirani Valdés from Tabasco Elementary. In listening skills, we had Jessica Alonso from Cabazos Elementary. In maps, graphs, and charts, we had Sabdiel Sánchez from Garza Elementary. In music memory, number sense, and spelling, we had Alisa Martínez from Tabasco Elementary. And in oral reading, we had Ariana Marroquín from Pérez Elementary. In Spanish poetry, we had Regina Barrientos from Escandon Elementary. And in science, we had Jeremy Johnson from Leo Elementary. Those were our fifth-grade district champions. And our overall first-place district champions was Tabasco Elementary. Congratulations to their campus coordinator, Ms. Jessica Tames, their UIL coaches, and their principal, Karen Villarreal.
Ms. Tijerina, I would like to thank you all for the, I could imagine how hard it was. You know, it's hard enough having the students in front of you, but doing something virtual like this. I mean, I just want to thank everybody that had a leading hand in this. I want to congratulate everybody that placed, but I would also like to thank and congratulate those that didn't place that at least participated. I'm pretty sure, you know, it was hard enough just to sit on a computer and try to do all this. But thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you, Mr. Cantú. This concludes our recognitions. Congratulations to all the students. Thank you, Board of Trustees, Dr. Science, and all the assistant superintendents for your continued support of UIL Academics.
Thank you, Ms. Tijerina. Congratulations to all our student winners, and thank you to their parents for their support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tijerina.
The next item on the superintendent's report is recognition of area, regionals, and state qualifying student athletes from La Jolla High School, Juárez Lincoln High School, and Palmview High School. Mr. Victor Garza, our Athletic Director, will do this recognition.
Good evening, Mr. President, and I'm Superintendent, Board of Trustees, and our audience virtually, our students that are watching. This evening gives me great pleasure to announce all the participants that have excelled, not only due to their virtual learning, but have taken all our safeguards in coming out and participating and representing our school district. Today, we'll be presenting our track and field, wrestling, and golf participants that have excelled not only in district, in area, and in the regional and state qualifications. I'll start with La Jolla High School. Men's, our Boys Varsity Track and Field. The four-by-100 relay team, or regional qualifiers, participated this past weekend in San Antonio. We have Adrian Carrizales, Ivan Garcés, Rene Guerra, Carlos Pérez, alternate Tristan Trevino, with their event coach and head coach, Joe Magallán. Our girls, La Jolla High School Girls Track and Field Regional Qualifiers in the four-by-200 were Kiana Flowers, Kayden Jackson, or Karian Jackson, Aileen Resendez García, Rebecca Rodríguez, Brianna Salazar. Regional qualifier, the high jump, district second-place finisher, Rebecca Rodríguez. She was also second place in the Povalt Regional Qualifier for La Jolla High School. Head Coach Leslie Luna. The Boys Varsity Wrestling District Champion, Regional Qualifier, Michael De La Cruz, and Andrés Ochoa, District Champion, Regional Qualifier, also in the Boys Wrestling for La Jolla High School. On the girls' side, District Champion, Regional Qualifier, we'll start with Natalie Rosas. Second-place District Regional Qualifier, Heriza González, Brittany De La Cruz, Nalea Sánchez, Kimberly De La Cruz, Margarita Fuentes, Marisa Ponce. All of them were regional qualifiers. It gives me great honor and pleasure to introduce a young lady that decided to come out days before the certification of weight and hydration that they must do prior to. This young lady is a great example of overcoming adversity, being resilient. She has a special story, and our hearts go to her and to her family for what she had to overcome to be a participant. Her name is Judith Rivas from La Jolla High School. She was a district champion, regional champion, and she got fourth place at state. That gave us, and she's got a great story, and our hearts go to her and her family for overcoming all of the adversity that they went through. But we congratulate her and her team, her head coach, Christopher Hernández, and Naomi Benford, their principal, Mr. Antonio Cano. Juárez Lincoln, Girls Varsity Track and Field. We have a regional qualifier in the 800 run, Kimberly Castillo. Event coach, Miranda Montalvo. Juárez Lincoln, Boys Varsity Track and Field, the four-by-400 relay, district fourth-place. Area qualifiers, Fernando Morales, Moisés Dianueva, Santo Garza, Leo Juárez. Head coach, René Loera. Their principal, Mr. Ricardo Estrada. Palmview High School, very proud of our golf teams. They came out, it's been a while that, I don't think, both of them at one time had won. They came out second, both of them in district play, and both advanced to regional in San Antonio this past weekend. On the girls' side, we had Haley Cortina, third overall medalist, third place for district. Imelda Pérez, Belinda Cortina, Tiana Vázquez, Alisa Quiroz. The team again finished second place. On the boys' side, we have Jeremy Cortez, who was also a third-place overall medalist, Ignacio García, Austin Ortiz, Tyler Ortiz, Manuel Flores. Their coaches, Coach David Cuate and Julio Munoz, for both the boys and the girls. Palmview Girls Track and Field, and these were district champion in the 800, regional qualifiers. Destin Quintanilla, also regional qualifier, 1600, in the four-by-400 relay team. Also with her in the four-by-400 is Jesslyn Flores, regional qualifier, Delane Sosa, Margarita López. 3200, regional qualifier, Aliya Leal. 100, 300 hurdles, regional qualifier, Leah Gómez. 400-meter qualifier, Janelle Prieto. 400 by 100, Daisy Allen. Their head coach, Coach Claudia Basan. Boys Palmview Track and Field, area qualifiers, Cruz Barrientos, Roel De Hoyos, Ezekiel De Hoyos, Gabriel Garza, Jesús González, Mauricio López, Andrés Gruneda, Eduardo Solís. Area and regional qualifiers in the 200-meter run, Delvin Gómez, regional qualifier, district champion, high jump. Regional qualifier, Adán Torres. 400-meter run, regional qualifier, Tony Villarreal. Head coach, Pedro Siledio. Principal, Ivana Yala. Those are the advancers, student athletes that advance to district, from district to area and regionals, and our state qualifier. They were very proud of all of them, and thank you for your support for our student athletes.
Thank you, Coach Garza, and congratulations to our student athletes, and thank you to their parents for their support. Mr. Salinas, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Science. Next up, be the discussion items. Number one, discussion on the Resilient Schools Support Program.
Mr. Martín Munoz, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will do this presentation.
Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, members of the board, and of the community, we will be presenting on the Resilient Schools Support Program that Dr. Science had referenced earlier. Early data indicates that due to the school closures and disruption in the 1920-2021 school year resulted in unfinished learning for many of our students, making recovery and acceleration plans even more crucial. You can see the TA released information or data there on the screen and also on page two of your packet. As you can see, traditionally, students have a 2.5 summer slide. This past year, early data indicates that our students had, across the state, a close to six-month slide when it came to learning. In addition to that, on the next page, you see historically what school disruptions have done to our students, or to Texas students. The TA released this information, and they referenced the effect that Hurricane Katrina had had on students, the disruption that that had caused in students. Even though the districts that worked with these students implemented intense interventions, it took them four years to close the reading gap, but they were never able to close the math gap, even though they had implemented intense interventions. They also referenced the disruption that the strikes in Argentina had caused on student learning. Historically, or that, for example, that generation, that had devastating long-term impacts on the unemployment and future wages resulting from, due to the fact that they had missed instruction for 88 school days. So, to ensure our district's response to the challenges posed by these unprecedented times, our district applied and was elected to participate in TA's Resilient Schools Supports Program. Our district will receive customized technical assistance over the course of April, all the way to June of 2022, to build robust COVID recovery and acceleration plans implementing continuous improvement cycles. RSP districts will seek to improve student outcomes in an approach that is inclusive and supportive of the broader school community, particularly with campus leaders, teachers, and families. So, on the screen and on your packet, you will see that the Resilient Schools Support Program timeline is supports. So, by early June, we will have a COVID recovery and acceleration plan, and we will be presenting it for your approval. By early July, we will identify priority areas and goals for next year. By late July, we will have an improvement plan developed. By mid-November, well, November, February, and April, we will meet with our technical support advisor, and we will do district reviews on our plan. And then, the process will culminate June of 2022 with the school year 2223 planning and reflection completed. Now, our district did establish a COVID-19 instructional and social-emotional recovery committee to craft our district's plan when it comes to identifying areas of concern and areas of need when it came to instructional and social-emotional learning. So, we're going to modify our district's instructional counseling routines, practices, and protocols to allocate additional time and resources to close instructional and social-emotional gaps created by COVID-19 disruptions. So, we wanted to brief you on our plan and how we plan to address the COVID disruptions, the effect that the COVID disruptions had on our students, whether it was instructional, social, emotional learning, and we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Thank you. I think it would be good if we would have a presentation during the month of May on what will be done for summer school.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know we're approving a lot of people tonight to work, so what is going to be done differently to start this process of catching the kids up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Next, under discussion, discussion of the Palmview High School pathways in technology, early college high school, the planning here.
Mr. Guadalupe Chávez, our Academy's Director, will do this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chávez.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. Sines. My name is Lupa Chávez again. I serve as the Academy's Director here at the district at La Jolla ISD. During, earlier during the school year, in order for us to expand educational opportunities, Palmview High School applied and was selected to a school within school PTEC planning school year. This was for, this is for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. This is not a designation. This is only a planning school year, which means that for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, Palmview High School is going to work with a TA selected technical assistants who will be guiding us, and there's already a roadmap set in place for this. Now, ten months prior to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we have the opportunity to apply for designation, okay? Now, should we apply for designation? This is so that TA, or for TA purposes, we need to meet the six elements of the benchmark blueprint of PTEC, which also comes with compliance on what's called the outcome-based measures in access, achievement, and attainment. Now, what is the definition of a PTEC school? PTEC schools, pretty much, it is an early college high school designed for students who are at risk of not enrolling in college. But unlike a traditional early college high school, which is a pathway towards an associate's degree, a PTEC is a pathways and technology, early college high school, and it gives the students the opportunity to earn a certificate of completion, which is a one-year college credential certificate, which can be stacked into an associate's degree of applied science. Now, the purpose, if you look at the very bottom of, after the highlighted areas there, they're big on work-based learning, which means that we have to connect every student to a work-based learning opportunity. Now, in addition to that, what TA is looking for is for students to have the skills when they leave high school, either with a certificate or an associate's degree, to enter the workforce. So that is the definition of a PTEC school. This is new in the state of Texas. It's been existing for about three years now, and here in the valley, as a matter of fact, there's maybe two or maybe three PTEC schools. So we are on top of our game by moving forward with this type of work. During the planning year, these are the things that we're going to be looking at. It's really to establish strategies to meet all the elements that encompasses a PTEC school. We must form a strong partnership with an IHE, which we already have with South Texas College, and then we must look for a business partnership as well, who's going to connect the students to the work-based learning opportunities. Absolutely, we need to look at how we're going to scale up and sustain these best practices, and we're going to scale up horizontally, and we're going to scale, and we're going to scale vertically as well. So we need to look at that. Again, this is for the planning school year. Form a leadership team for student success, and then establish a study crosswalk so that students have the opportunity to earn both a high school diploma and a certificate of completion, a college credential stacked to an associate's degree. And then finally, at the very end, you know, looking at highly jobs that are in demand here in the valley, so that students can enter the labor workforce. Now, this next slide right here, what the plan is, again, this is a school within a school model inside Palmview High School. So Palmview High School PTEC Academy, we want to focus on business and technology. Now, we have reviewed the labor workforce market with workforce solutions, and we have identified these three pathways. One of them is accounting. The second one is computer and information technology specialist, and then the third one is combination welding. Now, I added the Associate of Applied Science and the Bachelor's Degree because all these certificates can be stacked up into that Associate of Applied Science and can be stacked up to a Bachelor's Degree. So this is the information that we have. This doesn't mean that this pathway is set in stone. We can always, we're going to bring in workforce solutions into the planning year, and this may or may not change, depending on what the needs are here in the valley. But after looking at the workforce, labor data market, these are three pathways that we have identified so far. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I don't have a question. I just have a commendation, because this was in our long-range plan, and this type of early college, we had planned it for Juarez-Lincoln, but it really doesn't matter where it's at. It just matters that it happens, and maybe Palmview is a better site because it'll be off the expressway and closer to get for the partnerships and all that that is needed, but commendations to the CNI staff for moving along with the goals of the early colleges at La Jolla ISD. Thank you, Mr. Chávez.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Any other questions for me, or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chávez. Thank you, Dr. Benavides.
Thank you, Mr. Chávez. Okay, moving on, next, guys, B, consent agenda. Can I attend a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Under letter A, contracts, action on contract renewal for General Counsel Legal Services. So, Dr. Munoz, can I attend a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Under letter B, bits, number four, approval of the water bottle filling station CSP number twenty-one, twenty-one dash thirty-four.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second, all those in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Under letter C, business and finance, approval of the assistance of substantial completion of La Jolla ISD job order contract with performance services for the elementary tracks.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, Niquemba Señal? All those opposed? Motion passes. Number three, under C, B, approval of the, approval to authorize performance services to review feasibility, potential costs to deploy clean technology solutions and other potential cost-saving measures district-wide. Can I attend a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Under letter D, instructional and student services, approval of the TA pathways and technology, early college, high school, planning year for twenty-one, twenty-two.
So move on items five and six.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so I'll take that second there. All those in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And under letter D, number six, implement an alternate summer work schedule. Can I attend a motion?
So move on items three and four.
Items five and six.
No, items five and six were done together.
They were done together? Okay, so I didn't hear that.
So now it's three and four.
Okay, so three and four, that's, I didn't hear that. That's why sometimes I can't hear someone. Okay, so then, Adam, in three and four, so do I start? Do I do the three with the public hearing? Do I do it?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, guys, since it is a public hearing, I have to open it up for any questions on item number, B, number three, under letter E, human resources. Any questions on this, public meeting? I give it some time. Was it seven oh six, Blanco, for the record? Any questions? So then I close the meeting at seven oh six. So do I have that, do I keep that same motion, items three and four? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. At this time, under sections codes five-five-one-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-zero-seven-two, and five-five-one-zero-seven-four, at exactly seven oh six, we'll be going into executive session. Thank you. Okay, it's seven fifty, and we're back from executive session. Under letter H, personnel, can I have a motion? Items one through nine, please.
I so move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, Niquemba Señal?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, and just another motion for the adjournment.
So move.
Have a motion and a second.
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 Seven fifty, it adjourns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.